For starting purposes.
Okay. So, this is the work session for the Town Superior Planning Commission, January 18th, 2011. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
So, Matt, do you want to start us off with?
Sure. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
So, tonight's work session, just real quick, since we're starting the meeting, Joanne Eaton, our newest planning commissioner, can't make it, couldn't make it tonight because she's out of town, so she apologized in advance for that, but she will be here at our next meeting in February. So, we, tonight are meeting on the proposed 2011 Planning Commission work plan. We started these, I think it was last year, we started the work plans for all the advisory committees and commissions, something the former manager started and seems to have taken off with all the committees and commissions. They like to plan out their year and identify the projects they want to work on. So, we're going to plan on giving those to the town board on either the 24th, which is this coming Monday, or the 14th of February, to review and make modifications and give formal okay on. So, tonight's meeting is to discuss what the planning commission would like to look at in 2011. I provided you the 2010 work plan that we adopted last year and then gave you some ideas of what we might look at for 2011, and then open it up for discussion and any ideas that you want to add or delete or revise as far as.
I'm thinking we should look at Chapter 16 again.
Sick sense of humor.
We will.
Unfinished.
You will see parts of it.
I'm sure.
And I can go over just some of the items that we came up as a staff. The capital improvement projects, that was hammered out in the Chapter 16 revisions to where the planning commission does review major capital improvements, and I've listed some of those that we will probably see in 2011 and review. And those include the Rock Creek Underpass pedestrian improvements, Marshall Triple Left improvements, the townwide lane, that should say lane, it says lane. Lane and signal reduction analysis, and then the Coal Creek Basin improvements and South Original Town Drainage Evaluation and Prominent Improvements. And then, as always, we review any development or land use applications that we receive, and I think we'll receive a couple this year, so we can, I can give you more information on those. Out of the Chapter 16 land use code revisions, we had a couple of original town residents who felt that we should take a closer look at the mobile home standards, so that will go forth relatively soon for the planning commission to discuss. And then, as always, the Town Center project, which is going to be huge whenever it does move forward, so always keep that on the radar. And then the last one that we didn't get to last year because of a variety of reasons, but we want to get to this year is the green building standards for commercial buildings. We have the residential in place, and it's time that we need to get the green building for commercial in place. We're going to start some commercial development, so it'd be nice to have those in place.
So, those were some of the ideas we had come up with as staff. Anything the planning commission wants to add or delete to that list?
Well, I noticed the only thing missing is the Conoco being updated, impacts and opportunities for the town on the Conoco Phillips site regarding the development.
Yeah, and I was going to put that on here, and then I, you know, the story came out that they pushed back their deadline for submitting that to the City of Louisville to 2012 now, so, which is kind of the reason I had trouble getting something in front of the planning commission last year, just because they didn't know. Conoco Phillips kept saying, "Well, we're working on it." We weren't getting any solid deadlines.
Yeah, and in all reality, they probably won't break around anything until 2013.
Yeah, but, you know, we could add it and just keep it on the radar, too. I did have a discussion with the city manager of Louisville about seeing if they could help us get somebody before the planning commission, just to give us an update and kind of, but things seem to be so uncertain there that, but we could definitely add it, maybe towards the end of the year, as it gets closer to 2012, we could.
Yeah. It seems, it seems one of the largest issues before the town right now is the Jefferson Parkway, and as the, as an advisory board, you know, commission to the board, I mean, is there benefit to the board in the town that the planning commission reviews, traffic studies and the things that are coming out and provides our input into, into potential impacts on the Jefferson Parkway?
So, I'll go ahead and add that to the list. And then something I just thought of that I didn't add on here was the interchange committee for the town's been working with the City of Louisville on potential improvements to McCaslin 36 interchange. And as that-
Westbound ramp?
The loop. Because what's in the FEIS now is the double left, so that's kind of a, yeah, you might have to just blow out the entire bridge to widen it for a double left. There might be a way you could get a double left in there by doing, widening it and not have to blow it out. But then there's some other ideas to then discuss. That might be something that if it progresses to a point, the planning commission would come up as well.
What is the double left preferable to the, to the, or the, the right turn ramp? It was proposed at one time.
The, actually, the, on the traffic analysis, we've done the northeast loop works better than the double left, as far as levels service. But Louisville does not like the northeast loop for a variety of reasons. It takes, it gets it real close to their commercial, their hotels and some of their other commercial properties. You have somewhat significant retaining walls, but you might have those with the US 36 improvements, no matter what goes in. So, we hit a roadblock with the northeast loop at the City of Louisville. They didn't even want to consider it, and it wasn't included in the FEIS. So, we've been discussing alternatives to that, and there's been a couple of things, you know, other maybe possible connection points and things like that. But the double left is what was included in the FEIS, and so that's what our IGA with them points to. Whatever's included in the FEIS is what we'll design and build, but we don't want to, we're having discussions because we want to look at maybe other alternatives, so.
Any other ideas?
I'd like to just, I'd like to hear more explanation of the first bullet point, the major capital improvements, just for information purposes. Some of those are self-explanatory, but some of them I'm not sure what it is referring to.
Sure. Well, these are all included in the 2011 budget and the capital improvement program budget. And they're all in, of a major scope. The Rock Creek Underpass pedestrian improvements, that is mainly focused around, we had some issues with leaks at the underpass that have been resolved, and now it's a matter of what, what else do we want to do there now that we have those leaks fixed? Do we want to do some type of public art display, or do we want to, you know, do we want to add some type of lighting to help improve safety, and those type of things we're going to discuss for that. And then Marshall Triple Left, as we would add a third left turn lane, we would, so we'd have three lefts, a through, and a right at the McAslin intersection. What we've seen, especially during holiday season, is we get such volume of traffic that it backs up past Sicamore Street, which is good because it means, you know, we've got a lot of people shopping at the center, but we don't, we don't want to deter people from coming to the center and meeting, so it's something that we've discussed as a staff and have done designs, done some traffic analysis, and discussing about moving forward.
My armchair traffic analysis, given that I go through that intersection all the time at various days and times, what, what strikes me is that outside of the, basically the morning rush hour, let's say, where you have people coming along northbound on McAslin, going toward Louisville and Highway 36, if you, if you watch, and here's my measure, if you watch the, the lighting sequencing, and when a red light lifts on McAslin, you may have four or five cars on a regular basis, even past, much past 8:00 AM, 8:15 AM. On Marshall, when you finally lift the red light there, it's 10 to 15 to 20 cars back on a consistent basis. So, the first thing that strikes me is we actually don't have balance in the lighting. And I understand there's concern about, you know, how traffic is coming over the, the bridge and coming down, but also going through, again, that same intersection all the time coming that way. I am astounded at how many of the cars are angling to get over and squeeze everybody out to the right because they want to take that right onto Marshall, and how actually very few cars are proceeding south. So, I first wonder what can be achieved just by getting a better balance of the lights, because that's, that's consistent. I can, that's clockwork, how the backup is on Marshall, and yet that is not the favored light.
Yeah, you know, our current co-arr, who's our public works director, and our Alex Arnon, who's our traffic consultant, have looked at that intersection often, and they tell me that they have that signal time to get, to get Marshall the most green time they can.
But it, but if you always have 15 to 20 cars backed on Marshall and five on McAslin, that doesn't tell me it's, they're giving the preference.
But, but isn't, isn't it true, though, that if you, let's say, once, once you allow 10 cars or whatever through, that they're going to hit a red light on the other side of the bridge, or upbound, and then they, they would back up into the intersection if you let too many cars go, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, this is where, it's very tricky. It's, I didn't say it would be easy.
So, that's their analysis, and that's what they're telling me. The way this triple left would work is you would have the inside left that's for traffic going to Boulder. The, the second one is for traffic going north to Louisville, and then the third outside left would be for traffic going to Denver.
And are we going to somehow actually have lane lines that stay, so people aren't in a big free for all?
Yeah.
Well, you'll always have some of the free for all.
If you had signage on Marshall Road, queuing people into the correct. We'll have stripage, but then, so, some of the other costs, and you'll see it if it comes forward, is, you know, you'll have the overhead signs watching, so.
So, it's Denver only.
It'll be bigger than the one coming from the Louisville side that's about that big for people going to the Denver lane.
More people miss that, and so, that's part of the cost there for this, these. So, that's that one. The townwide lane and signal reduction analysis is looking at, and it's, right now, we're just doing an analysis and getting recommendations on which direction to go, but it's looking at Rock Creek Parkway. Do we want to take that from four lanes to two? South Coal Creek Drive, do we want to do that? Do we want to add roundabouts at certain intersections? Those type of things that we'll discuss in fact. So, those could have some major impacts.
That sounds pretty expensive.
Well, the initial cost is expensive, but the, the long-term cost is less, because you're taking away pavement, you're putting in grass or rock or something that doesn't cost as much to maintain of the light. But we'll do that whole analysis and bring it forward. And the Coal Creek Basin improvements, this is something we've been doing with urban drainage. We do it for the Rock Creek, and we'll be doing it for Coal Creek, just clearing obstacles out of the basins, improving the flow. Urban drainage takes the lead on those, but we have input on the design, so, and we split the costs 50/50 usually. And then the South Original Town Drainage Evaluation, so we've had some complaints with original towns south of Third Avenue with regard to the way water flows off of the open space there to the south and down into Original Town. We have some issues at the alleys that we're looking at, and maybe some inlets that we need to add, some improvements to some pitches that we have in place in those areas. That's what we're doing there.
I have another question. Unfortunately, we didn't get an opportunity to include this in any kind of work plan last year, or possibly it should have been the year before that. I still feel we really got taken by surprise to some degree with the movement toward Guardian Storage without even having any kind of a broad area plan for, you know, five very different weird properties, you know, that all sit on 76th Street. And I'm still kind of consider, concerned about the possible hodgepodge that is still kind of the attitude toward the 76th Street area. Like I say, it may be too late because there's already going to be this one footprint, and it just puts into play or not, in really weird ways, the other properties. And I, I felt that we really should have been asked to consider some sort of broad area plan before specific parcels started to go out. Like I say, it may be too late to further discuss 76th Street.
We did look at some projects that tried to tie a lot of it together.
Well, but those were going against the, but those were going against the, the overall plan that was, they were coming forward with 90% residential, and that was not in the overall plan. It was to be mixed use with a small residential. So, when they were coming together on it, they weren't, they weren't conforming to what the plan was supposed to be. So, in, in my opinion, it was like, that's why it was rejected. Then everyone kind of goes into dormancy, and, you know, we, we kept, you know, we, I think some of the zoning slightly changed up there, but we didn't take any action toward, you know, any kind of the just broad area plan.
You mean like connection points and those type of things? Because, I mean, you have the comprehensive plan as, you know, non-residential use.
Right.
Kind of fly in my face.
Ideally, ideally, we would have had, those landowners would have gotten together and they would have found that had lots, those lots differently, to take advantage of maximizing the site, right, for all the benefit of all the landowners.
Right, yeah, yeah. And I don't know what, what processes are there to try to encourage or, you know, help go in a direction so it wouldn't just be a hodgepodge. I'm still concerned it's just going to be a hodgepodge, but hey, maybe it's not my concern.
My observation is that you also have, you have owners that, that really don't have the wherewithal to put money into a pot, to plan in, in general. That isn't true for everybody there.
Right.
So, that has a, it would be more useful if a developer came along and tried to talk to them about acquiring and aggregating parcels, but no one has showed up, and I'm not sure the folks that are left there, I mean, the most active in this planning effort that has been, we've seen in the past, has been the owners of the property that sold to Guardian Storage. Everybody else, except for one other person, has been fairly, you know, dormant or passive in the, in the thing, and it has a lot to do with their ability to really engage in that kind of planning. So, from the develop, from the owner's side, I think it's always been an issue and a problem. That then puts it back, back to the town sort of to say, "Okay, is this what, do we want to plan this out a little in more detail?" We're with the owners on that, and then this is, you know, but the plant, but the town would basically be spending the money to do the book.
Okay.
And that's sort of where we, sort of where we ended up, and obviously where we are now. I don't know if things have changed with the owners in the last, say, six to nine months, but more than likely, you're shaking your head, it's no.
Not that I've heard of.
No. So, that's, it's a tough one. It's, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I just thought I'd throw that out there.
I mean, you can take a look at the COP plan again and see what you think about that in terms of the general land use allocation.
Oh, I think that part is good. I mean, that, we, a lot of people worked on that a lot, and I was one of those, you know, trying to understand what could be the best bid up there, given you're next to a C dot facility, you're, you know, ever closer to a noisy highway, you know, retail traffic, and, and I think the, the rezoning of it made a lot of sense. That, I think it really did.
Let's see, the, the other part was the annexation part. Only one owner took the opportunity to go through that whole process.
Okay.
The others, not really done it. Even Mr. Wade, he was active at one point before, long time ago, actually, way back in the late 90s.
Well, he was active at the very end of the process with Guardian, trying to, trying to put a deal together with the other landowners to try to make something happen, but he was slow to say, and a little, either late in the process or couldn't get everybody on the same page.
Yeah, yeah.
So, very difficult.
Okay.
Okay? Any other questions about what we have there?
Anything, anything you feel like shouldn't be on this list? When, when we're talking about green building standards, I mean, are we adopting, are we talking about commenting on proposed adoption of a new, you know, of a current change to IBC or the, you know, UBC or whatever certain building code we're under, or are we talking about specifically additional, additional layer of, you know, building standards that, that are somehow someone else has already sort of codified?
It'd be an additional layer, because we've, you know, we have, I think we operate under 2006 IBC, and then the 2009 will be, you know, adopted that shortly, I would think, this year still, because they just came out with those standards. But we worked with the city of Boulder, Boulder County, and then a consortium of businesses on some green building standards for commercial. So, we would, we'll use those as a basis, because the, the goal of the consortium was for all the cities in the county to adopt somewhat similar regulations for green building for commercials, so that everybody kind of has the same playing field. Now, I don't know if that's going to happen, but at least we have, you know, some agreement on what the level should be above what the current codes call for. So, that's, that's what we're going to be basing our standards off of, that work that we did last year. And there's a lot of meetings on it, so they did a lot of work. And we may not go with every recommendation that was given by that consortium, but I don't, as well as some other cities, but for the most part, they were good recommendations that came out of that group, that working group, so. So, it'd be similar to the residential, you know, we have the baseline, what's in the International Building Code, and then we go above that by 30%, so. Did you run across that, the residential?
Anything else? Anyone?
Is that it?
Will you speak?
That's so rare.
I know!
So, I'll make these revisions and send them out for everybody to look at one more time before it goes to the board.
And then, as far as actually trying to work through these different things that we've able to put together our calendar of, through the year of trying to tackle these things throughout, and?
Yeah, you know, last year was kind of crazy because we were just trying to get through the land use code.
Right.
So, this year, it's, I, well, you know, a lot.
I know the look ahead has things on it, but I mean, I'd like to, I guess I'd like to see some of these things appear on the look ahead for us, so that we're, you know, we're sort of checking them off throughout the year rather than getting down to the end and going in the last quarter of the year and saying, "Wow, gosh, we haven't really tackled these at all."
Yeah. That third bullet, you'll see your next meeting.
Yeah, I figured that was coming soon. And I intended that.
That's on the look ahead right now, but yeah, we'll, and then the CIP, we'll schedule those on the look ahead as they move forward. They're going to, each project's going to vary. But yeah, we'll, we'll start getting these on the look ahead so we can plan out the year for, for. And then the, the green building standards, we still have to put together what our draft's going to look like, so that'll probably be some more towards the middle.
One, one other item to, well, two things, I think. At one point, we did, at least, I think Bruce had done this, was a little bit of an orientation for planning commissioners to take them through the COP plan, land use code, those kinds of things. And that might be beneficial for, maybe for Ian and for, well, maybe for everyone, but just a, just a refresher.
And we've had those.
With both.
Okay.
And with Joanne, too?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Fred and I.
Okay. Good.
Gave a stack of.
Check that one out.
I got through that yet.
But the other thing was, say.
Did you get the losses, you know, with the stack?
I, I always think there's a lot of benefit to meeting with the board as a, even more informally, if it's just, you know, sitting on the table and talking about some of these things. I know even relatively young boards, so to speak, I mean, a lot of new, sort of new faces there, don't necessarily, haven't necessarily, just made a lot in the planning process either, and so, to the extent that we can, you know, even do an evening, meetings, or just.
We had one of those late last year with Parks Recreation Open Space Trails Committee, and that went over well, except for, I don't think we had dinner selected, did we have dinner? That didn't go over well, but.
So, it needs to have dinners.
We'll have dinner, yeah.
The budget for the dinner.
Yes, yes. And we're doing, trying to schedule something with open space as well, so yeah, we'll shoot for a date for that kind of dinner. They, they thought, that meeting they had with Prostack was good, and I think they're open to doing more of those, so, so yeah, that's a good idea. to doing more of those, so, so yeah, that's a good idea. Okay. I had one thought here that came to my mind just now. There may be, who knows, some sort of a regional-wide get-together. In the past, Boulder County has put together some regional get-togethers, sometimes around specific issues. I remember there was one I went to about transportation planning that was going on, and it was pretty interesting because it gave everybody a chance to get a more regional-wide perspective. Those come up, would the planning commission be interested in going to those? In other words, do we, in other words, if something comes up, you would be, if you were interested, you know, we would say, raise our hand probably and say, you know, yeah, our group would like to go to this one, depend on course what it is, but that's always a possibility. We, I never know, we never know if whenever, if ever, they're going to do it this year, but anything like that, but it's always a possibility, something like that would come up.
Yeah, I mean, I think communicating, if you can, specifically to the planning commission about those types of meetings and any other kind of regional things, whether it's a CDOT meeting regarding the, you know, US 36 stuff, or, I mean, I know you guys are, you guys are getting, hearing about these things all the time, but we don't necessarily see them unless we're specifically looking for stuff. And I don't know, have a ton of time to be looking for stuff, so if I do hear about them, you know, certainly interested, so.
Yeah, we can do that.
And then people can attend if they're able, interested.
And then they, Dr. Cog has these workshops and stuff that are good sometimes, too. Phil's is pretty good about letting you know when those happen.
We do those every August, I went to one year before last.
They're beneficial to go to.
Yeah, would be helpful.
And then I mentioned the mobile home standards that will, I still have to meet with George Cuffner, but I plan on having that first meeting in February to just begin the discussion. With him, we'll provide you some background, some options. And then Resolute, which is the commercial piece off of Colton Road near the mall, near the reservoir there, they are getting close to finalizing their deal with the hotel group, so we expect them to submit plans sometime in this first quarter, we hope, for their final plant site plan, so. And then Remington Homes, which is the Ochsner property down on Cold Creek, they are finalizing their final development plan, and I would expect something from them in the next two months as far as this metal, so.
I have a question. We don't see a lot of plans come forward, haven't, you know, the last couple of years, just not much has been happening. So those of us who, you know, are not even new anymore, but still haven't seen a lot of plans, is it possible that we could, I don't know what's legal, but if a plan comes forward to have a chance to have a work session, maybe come together as a commission experienced, people who are experienced looking at these plans, just get together and have a session to talk about the plan and what the components are, what the pieces are, you know, there's terms in there I know some of us are familiar with, some things that we should be looking at, shouldn't be looking at. Is that something we can do? Or is it?
I'm carrying Kendra inside my head right now.
Or do we take an old, or do we take an old plan, you know, or do we take a plan that's, you know, from the past and sit down and have a work session and just talk about?
We could do that.
You know, something like that.
You certainly could do that if, in terms of if you're looking at, want to look at or understand how to read drawings better and understand what the plan is telling you. You know, that's certainly a possibility. The, the other option is that we could take time during the meeting to do that.
Right.
So that it's in the public forum, right? You could always do that, I suppose, it just takes more time.
Right.
Right?
So, yeah, both options are possible.
I like, I mean, if the commission's willing to take some more time and it could help some of this.
Sure. So would you prefer to take one that we've already approved and kind of go through that, or just do it at, like, the public hearing or?
I like something more informal where we can just gather and be throwing out questions and not feeling like we're tying up, you know, consultants and tying up other people. I think that sounds like a really great exercise to do, and let's think of, you know, how we pull the plans from something else to do that.
I want to say you have to be careful if it's one that's sound to do versus one that did. No, it'd be something that's already approved and, okay.
Could that be considered like a work session or something?
Yeah, we would do a work session, yeah.
I was trying to think of something recently that, I mean, the fire station might be a good one, right?
Yeah.
Although it doesn't have a lot of civil, so maybe, or maybe the fire station and the original roundabout or something, you know, where you're kind of looking at civil drawings and architectural drawings.
Or you go back to like Calmont and or something.
Right. Although there's current projects still.
Yeah.
It's not very current, but it's.
Yeah.
But it was approved.
It was approved.
It's approved, it's passed in that sense.
We'd be looking at, we'd be looking at it as an approved project, not anything that they may be very forward to change the project.
Right. Just what are the elements and, and, yeah.
Should that be more of a residential one?
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay. And maybe we can look at a couple, maybe like you mentioned.
And do we have any more information on the town center? I know there was a group that was trying to acquire properties. Is there any more noise about that?
Kind of same old story from them, you know, they're all interested and working on tying up the land, and, but they say, it's kind of, it's been the same story, they say they have it under contract, they plan on buying it by the end of X, and that date comes and goes, and so. So, yeah, no, not a lot of information there. You've got to have something to build.
Yep.
At least one.
Why live in Big Data?
And then, no real news on the marketplace either, as far as, we have still three pads that are vacant, and...
Ethan Allen's totally gone, right?
Yeah, they're trying to sell it.
Right.
Their problem is the price that they want for it is just an obstacle, basically, so.
Not what the market will pay them.
No.
Well, they haven't approved, what do they have?
They haven't approved. FDP.
FDP, now is it expired yet, or will it?
They got an extension.
They did.
For another 18 months.
So they're trying to sell it with that, I would say.
Yeah. Although if they don't sell it prior to this latest extension expiring, I don't think the board's going to grant them another one, so.
And we've lost some more tenants.
Yeah, the toy shop.
Toy shop's gone.
They had two locations, they had one at the mall and one here, this one go, and we met with the leasing agent for Centro, and he said that he thought they were going to let that one go, too, because they have one, I think he said in Westminster, so he wasn't too sure they were even going to keep that.
So there's also some discussion about them emptying some of the buildings in order to attract some larger tenants, like maybe, has there been any?
Yeah, the shops along Sycamore there, near Target, they were talking about demoing those and putting some mid-box, because there's more demand for the mid-box, but they're a little cash-strapped right now, so that's kind of been put on hold, so. And they have some prospects for Center Drive, those shops there, but nothing signed yet, so. The sheriff's substation is working well, they like their space, so.
What's the completion date on the fire station now? It's good close.
I haven't heard the latest. They had some issues with either their subcontractor or their general contractor, but they've gotten those resolved, and, but they were shooting for the end of the year, obviously that didn't happen, but I haven't got a latest completion date. But I can follow up with the chief and get back to you if you want.
Just curious. As long as the fire truck can get out, that's all I care about.
Okay. All right. Cut it, everyone? Anyone? Good? Okay. All good. Thank you.
Thank you.